The first video is of the 1980s, and it was made in 1980 by a local photographer called John Smith. He was a photographer who had been working with his wife for over 50 years. He was interested in capturing the beautiful mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He also wanted to explore the natural beauty of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers in the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands. He took pictures of the mountains and rivers of the 1980s. He was very interested in the nature of the Scottish Highlands.
Yeah, for a future meeting.
Okay, I agree.
So.
So there's a motion for amendment.
To add the legislative committee relations.
Do we just vote on amendment?
Well, I can, what I can do is just say, I mean, we're making a motion to table this till the May meeting.
It's not a table.
I know, it's postponed.
Postpone what amendment? Then we're postponing the whole.
We can postpone the whole issue, the whole, I'm sorry.
I can point to order it in a point D.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Postpone the issue of the legislative committee and her amendment. Essentially postponed the first amendment to the May meeting. Which is the, to add a legislative committee engagement.
Then are we still able to vote on the main motion?
Yes. Yes.
Hmm, sounds a little odd to me, but I'm not sure that's.
That's fine, if, all right, final objection. If, if we'd like to vote on the amendment, are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
I think that'd be clear.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 So there's four nays, three yays, the motion fails. And now we're back to the main motion, which is approval of establishment of standing committees. Um, the three committees, um, as laid out, employee relations, personnel and policy. Any discussion?
I, I.
Yeah.
The only comment I would make is this does not preclude creation of one or two other committees, including the ones we've talked about.
And actually, we can.
And we can change these.
We can change these anytime we want, as need, under an as needed basis is the, is the language and the policy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, quickly, I'd like to get through designation of legal counsel. If someone could make a motion to approve, uh, naming the following firms as legal counsel for Monongrove School District, Boardman Clark Law Offices, W, WSB Council, Quarles and Brady, Joseph Hill Law Office, Godfrey, Khan and DeWitt. God, Godfrey and Khan, DeWitt, Ross and Stevens Law Firms.
I have a question.
Oh, wait.
Also move the approval of these law firms.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving second, comments?
Yes. I would be interested in discussing, and I've discussed this before, getting rid of Joseph Hill.
As the, who's the hearing officer?
Um.
I would, um, I would, my comment would be that this is, this is a resolution, this is a legal resolution, it allows them to be our, uh, allows them to serve us as legal counsel. We do not have to, um, we don't have to use them. And that discussion you're having, I think, if you want to have that, I think is a, is a discussion that we need to have as board and a consultation with various administrative. I don't think it's a decision made tonight, which means I, I don't think it would be wise to be able to take it off the list tonight.
And the other point is, we don't name our expulsion hearing examiner until after July first by statute, so approving this tonight doesn't mean anything.
It's gonna be like, when we come to have a discussion, say, I've already had that discussion in here for a year.
And in fact, if we selected a different one, we would have to make another resolution.
Right, we would, and we probably will, because, yeah.
Dean?
I have, I have inquiry of Dan. I, I think we've kind of added a law firm about every two years. Uh, are, are these based on the specialty to which we go to them for? Uh, WSB Council is kind of there for general, particularly, uh, non-intimate or higher level, low level issues.
Right.
Uh, Quarles and Brady, uh, uh, is, is that our, uh, what's happened to the one that we've always, Boardman and Clark is on top, that's our general counsel. Now, how do, what, what do we use Quarles and Brady, Godfrey and Khan for? Uh, Dick, Ross, Ross and Stevens is the, is the trust issue, my guess is. So are these other ones specialized as well?
They are, Quarles and Brady does financial work for us when we do our refinance and so on. Uh, Godfrey and Khan, I'm not sure.
They did our, they negotiated our lease for Nuestro Mundo. Jeff, Jeff Emright from Godfrey and Khan negotiated our lease for Nuestro Mundo.
Oh, okay.
And has reevaluated that lease as it comes out.
They use them for profit issues and that sort of thing. Okay, I just wanted, as a matter of general education.
Yeah, so as you mentioned.
Only for our members of Boardman and Clark.
All right, it's been moved to second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, designation of official news, newspaper. Um, you do a resolution naming the Herald and Independent's official newspaper in school districts.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Been moved to second, the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, all opposed?
I'm sure it'd be good, though.
Yeah, okay, not everybody has to vote.
Well, there is an obligation to vote, that is a more obligation to vote.
Designation of official bank depositories. Uh, if we could get a resolution naming the following institutions as official bank depositories in Monongrove School District. Manona State Bank, PMA Financial Network Incorporated, and statutorily authorized vehicles to which they recommend, US Bank and the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative.
So moved. Second.
Movement seconded.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, Dan, again, how do, maybe Jared, if, uh, how do we use these different places? Do we, uh, how does Manona, US Bank and the Investment Services?
Yep, uh, so Manona State Bank houses our student activity accounts. And, uh, PMA Financial assists us with our financing and, and when we do our cash flow borrowing, the investing of that. Um, and that's why it's statutory authorized vehicles, so they don't necessarily hold the money, they bid out the money and then they transfer it out. US Bank is our primary bank that holds our general fund money, so our general accounting, um, they're partnered with, with Investment Services. Cooperative, that's cooperative across the state of different school districts. Uh, what happens is they monitor our money and we're able to sweep out our accounts, so it's not just sitting in our account, and we invest what we can with that.
Um, I wanted to mention that there's a resolution, uh, the resolution is in the board docs, and so it should, it should be, the motion should be move the resolution as presented. Yes?
To the resolution as presented.
That's right, thank you. I didn't use those words.
And Dean, you are, please second that.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, we need approval of, uh, a motion for a resolution naming the following organizations as professional organizations with the Monongrove School District. Uh, professional organizations, which, hmm, I still didn't quite write, but, which, which the Monongrove School District is a member. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards, CISA II, CISA V and CISA VI, and there's a resolution as presented.
I'm making notes into the resolution after that, right?
Yes, right.
Second?
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Dean?
I have a question, uh, we are a member of CISA VI, right?
CISA II.
We're CISA II, right?
Yeah.
Uh, is, is there a cost to be in CISA V or CISA VI?
No, we do not pay membership dues, it's, we have certain consortiums we belong to or services specific to those CIsas, but CISA II is the only membership.
And, uh, and each of the CIsas tend to have a specialized service or functional area, is that one of the reasons why we belong to III?
Yes.
And what, what are their functional areas?
That question was coming. I, I'm not sure exactly what services we receive from CISA V and VI, I don't know, Jared, if you know specifically. So I think in the past, there have been services, I'm not aware of any currently.
You've had a connection to CISA.
In the past, we've used CISA VI, we're not currently any longer, um, and I'm not sure what we've used.
So the question is, why not all twelve of them, I guess?
What about the, the training for, um, the district office evaluations?
Thank you, you're right, you are using CISA VI for the evaluation.
And I thought, CISA V, I remember seeing that somewhere, but I forgot. I mean, sometimes it's purchasing.
That's for the district, you know, central office people, training program, that's what I thought.
Right, right.
Infinite campus.
Oh, CISA V, okay.
Thank you.
What was it?
Infinite campus, through CISA V.
It's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion, Carrie?
Just one question, so I see these professional organizations, is there anything on a national level that we would be engaged in? Because Wisconsin is its own kind of unique world right now. Are there other relevant professional organizations broader than these?
Susan, or, the, Dan?
Yeah, there's a national organization for school boards, uh, my understanding is that this, uh, board has not been a member for quite some time, I don't know if it ever has been in the past. Uh, but there is a national organization similar to the state association.
I think, in fact, we get the benefits of the national organization through the state organization in large part.
Yeah, I think our feeling is, we have a really good state organization that offers quite a bit, not all states have that, and the national one is very expensive, so we've just never belonged to that, to my knowledge. So that's why.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, appointment of the CISA II representative, our current CISA II representative is?
Susan.
Oh, uh, no, wait, the, um.
No. No one's gonna step up.
Actually, WSB.
Well, I think we ought, Susan, you and I could clarify this a bit, because.
Yeah, explain what it is, but who did it last year, I don't even remember who did it last year. Maybe I did, I did, that's right.
If you're representative. Susan, correct me, but I think if you're a representative, you go down there, uh, once or twice a year to Whitewater.
Yes.
And vote on who will be the member, a member on the board. And Manona is in with Deerfield and Madison and ourselves. Those three or four districts have one representative that sits on the CISA Board of Governments. And, uh, and once that person goes down and casts their vote and has a box dinner, uh, their job is done, okay? Unless they happen to get rep, elected, uh, by chance to be that, that night.
Except just to clarify, I, I, it's going back to me now, I was our representative this past year and that our seat was up, but the gentleman from Deerfield, the Deerfield Board was elected and his term is two or three years, so he will continue as the, uh, as the CISA II Board Representative this year. So literally this year, this position is simply a one-time meeting, which is on Tuesday in May, do you have a date?
So it's Tuesday, May nineteenth.
May nineteenth, so, so the deal is you drive down there, uh, oh, and that's a long range.
Whitewater.
You drive down to Whitewater to participate in this meeting, they, it's the annual meeting of CISA II, so they're required to do this annually and their representative boards are all supposed to send delegates, and not everyone does, but, um, you get, you know, there's usually a little program and you get an introduction to their board and you can stay and watch the board meeting if you want. But there will be no election for this district this year. So all you're committing to is that one night.
And there's free food.
Yes, it's free dinner, sort of, that's all.
No.
Forget if there's really much of a dinner.
Do we have?
I, I, I served as, as on their Board of Governors.
Right.
Because I never got elected.
Your year was up.
I, I never got elected, but I think I kind of moved into position.
I forget how that happened, I thought you did get elected, that, whatever, you did, yeah.
Well, I ended up there anyway.
But that won't be, that won't be an option this time, because that person is still on the Deerfield Board, so.
Is there anyone that's interested in doing it?
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna ask for nominations.
Volunteers or nominations?
Okay, not hearing any nominations.
I really nominate somebody who wants to do it, that's why I was asking.
I'm gonna ask for volunteers.
We just asked for volunteers.
Otherwise, I was gonna voluntold someone else, but.
I'd be willing to do it. I'm joking, I'd be happy to if you, you know, either way, I'm very flexible. Not it, I'm in.
Any?
I'm happy to.
Any other volunteers?
Those of us on the long.
We have a long range planning.
Four of us have a connection to the Long Range Planning Committee, and they're gonna meet that night, so.
If someone.
Otherwise, I'd do it, I mean, it's, I think it's fine, it's nice to do it, it's a networking thing, so if you're willing to do it, that would be great.
I vote to accept Jennifer's, um, self nomination to serve the CISA.
And actually, we don't vote on this, Peter just points it up.
No, actually, uh, there's an, the agenda item is calls for approval by board.
What?
It says.
It says appointment of.
It says move approval of, so I'd like a motion to approve Jennifer Smith.
Oh, okay.
As, as a CISA II Representative, fifty fifteen, two sixty.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Jennifer, you didn't vote aye, I don't think, did you?
Yes, I did.
Designation.
It didn't look real enthusiastic, I will bring.
Very quiet.
It's a half on report to following board meeting, though, so.
That's right.
Take notes.
Designation of Monongrove School District Safety Officer, um, I'd like to resolu, uh, motion for her to approve the resolution designating Mark Sclane as the Safety Officer of Monongrove School District as presented in your board.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Does that?
This is discussion.
He's retiring, is it?
Right, once a nominee, and we'll have to, yeah.
Yes, we'll have to replace him after.
For the duration of the year, until he retires.
Gotcha. Cause then we'll do.
Any other discussion? Uh, been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just ask you a quick procedural question, just a second?
Yep.
And I, I don't mean to take you back, but, um, just for clarification for next year, and it's a big deal, but, did you say we needed a board approval on the CISA II rep?
The suggested, suggested action on the agenda is board approval.
It says appointment.
Right, we, we, I think we've not done it in the past, but it's, yeah.
I just, the only, I'm just saying.
I need to clarify that, because if you look on the recommended, under, it says appointment, but if you look on the agenda item details, recommended action move approval of. And I think appointment means the board appoints. But you're right, it is, there is a little discrepancy between the language there.
Yeah.
I was just looking at how it was designated.
Okay.
For all.
Uh, so the board policy says designation, however, I believe it does, that doesn't mean it's not a board function to designate.
I, and I just, I, you know, I just thought, for next year, we should just make sure we clarify that as we go in and use the right language.
Yeah.
Because last year, we did not board approve that.
Correct, we're gonna have more clear policies by next year, that's our goal.
All right, fine.
Your dream.
We're getting better all the time.
I hope so.
I'm sorry, we approved the Safety Officer, correct?
Yep.
And now we need, uh, item thirteen, designation Monongrove Education Foundation Representative. Monongrove Education Foundation meets a second Tuesday of each month at eight in the morning. Uh, do we have any nominations for that position?
That was also appointed last year, as well as the WSB.
Right, but let's just go with how its agenda is this year, we'll do it.
I don't have any issue with making this a board decision.
I don't either.
Um, yeah, I, I prefer, I actually prefer it to be a board decision, um, and so, uh, we can.
Well, in the past, Susan and I have, have been the rep.
I was at once, you were at once, so.
You were at, that there.
You're good with somebody else volunteering.
Who would like to volunteer for that?
I.
It's a good time, it is, you do get to meet some, it actually, it's not a bad time at all. You get to meet some interesting people and they all stop.
It meets at eight o'clock on, um, the second Tuesday, and they've been going to different buildings, and it meets till about ten.
Do I, uh, have a volunteer? I don't have a nomination, do I have a volunteer, really?
Well.
We can have a vote now and draft them.
Uh, can I speak?
Yes, Carrie.
The reason that I'm not volunteering is because of my work schedule.
I know.
What, what I actually, I, I took my, the three things that I do, and I just wrote a little note to both Jennifer and Carrie, just because I thought, you know, because I've done it, you might be interested in it. And, um, I'd be more than willing to continue to do that, um, and kind of what I said to Carrie was, you know, I always call Susan if I can't go, or Dean if I can't go. And kind of what I said to Carrie was, you know, I always call Susan if I can't go, or Dean if I can't go. So it may be that they're doing a special thing, like working on the gala, and Carrie would be a good person to come. And if she could work it out with work once in a while. So I would, if you're looking for somebody to serve, I'd be willing to do that. It may be that we're using other board members to also have that experience, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage, however, for everybody on the board to do that if they can possibly take a turn in it.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Well, I don't mean this year, I mean, as we go around.
One year, yeah, one time, yeah.
So I understand work schedules, but if you can, if, it's a good thing to do, so if you can find a way to do that sometime in the future. I heard everybody do it. Dean, you had another comment?
There's just a way that these meetings end up, they find retired people. And, but I, I do think you're, you're right on it. I've been, Susan and I have seconded her.
Well, I used to go from eight and leave at nine, and I'm sure I got all of the interesting stuff.
Well, and Dan also attends all these meetings, so if you can't make it once or twice, Dan's there to cover, so.
So right now, we have Susan as proposed.
Board backup.
All right. Would somebody make a motion for approval of Susan Manning as Monongrove Education Foundation Representative for 2015-16?
Second?
Do we have a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You know who your backups are.
Motion carries. I think the vote was six to one. Susan voted against us.
Go on, tell them that, though.
No, I, it really is fun. I just want everybody else to have the experience. And again, Dean said, I'd encourage you to bring other people in, and I'd be happy to do that when you can go. In fact, I'll put it out there and say, it's coming up. If somebody else would like to attend, this is what the agenda is and what they're doing. That'd be great.
The next item of agenda, on the agenda is other delegations, is, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the WSB delegate and the Teacher Mentor Project Committee Representative, and, and other designation is determined by board president. It also says, do we have, first of all, a, anyone interested in serving as a WSB delegate?
And it's, I assume it's clear, we went, we did go over that in the orientation with ideas. That's the one-time attendance at the State Delegate Assembly in January.
Don't you, weren't you have other meetings you had to go to?
No, no, that's only if you're on the policy.
So do I have volunteers? Do I have nominations? Do I have anybody to draft?
Oh, volunteer for that this year.
Dean's volunteering one of those.
Susan tells me you learn a lot and it's fun.
You do. It's interesting.
It's debate.
I did, I did it for five years, because nobody wanted to do it. Peter did it last year. I think that'd be great.
I used to have to attend them as deputy superintendent of schools.
You just have to listen to the loonies from West Bend.
You get, you get all the views. That's what's interesting about it. It's good.
Okay, very quickly, any discussions? Dean, I'm, Dean, you want, Dean's not nominated, or is it, there's a motion to approve Dean as the WSB delegate?
So moved. Or you wanna do it as one motion, the way it's written here?
Yeah, I was just, well, I was gonna do two motions, just for simplicity, because it's always getting confusing to do.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Teacher Mentor Project Committee, you're doing that now?
Yes, yes.
Is that like?
Every third Thursday at four o'clock. And basically, you're a liaison. You listen. You, because of the way they run the meeting, you do kind of do some active participation. But you don't really offer, they do the work. They're doing the work. We just stay tuned.
I, I have a question. Jennifer, isn't this close to the line of work that you're into?
Yeah.
And I talked to her about it. That was one of the things I talked about.
Would you be interested in doing that?
I would gladly attend.
Anyone else interested?
It's remembering that the board liaison position, remember, you were a teacher mentor before, like that piece. What you are is you're the board liaison. It's a little different, yeah.
If I get a motion?
Yeah, I move to select Jennifer Smith to represent us in the Teacher Mentor Project.
Second? I'm moving second for a discussion. All in favor? That's the last, last item on the discussion, for discussion, and now I need a motion to return.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And now I would like to move, we have another, directly into our next meeting, because we do have a little time crunch.
Susan, what's, what's this sent you?
She did, but we have someone that's with us that needs to do this.
Oh, right, okay, so we can do a break after that.
Yeah, we can.
Perfect, okay.
So I'd like to call the Meeting of Monongrove Board of Education, regular school board meetings of order. Has there been a declaration of public notice?
Yes.
Okay, public appearances, I don't have seen none. Should we go right to the on-premise? I would like to move item F in front of the consent agenda and anything else, which is discussion and possible approval of teacher retirement benefit plan. And we have, sorry, I'm a little bit behind here. Whoops. I'm sorry, you're Brian Anderson with Whitewest Stevens.
Whitewest Stevens, one of the law firms that you authorized.
Good thing.
In my specialty area, which is employee benefits.
This is where I clerked. So direct to recuse myself.
That was a long time.
I still have it.
Oh.
Ron Reddick.
Oh, Ron Reddick. Well, Ron's still around. Ron's an old timer, even older than me.
Quite a little.
So, I'm here. I guess, I know, I know that you first discussed this at the last meeting two weeks ago. So, but there may be some questions for me, since I had drafted both the plan and the trust document, so I'm here. Unfortunately, I do have to leave by eight, so I appreciate your moving this agenda item up to this spot. So who wants to start with questions?
Dean?
I'll talk out loud a little bit for our new, our two new board members. We've, we've developed, I guess, in your business, a business plan for, for the post-retirement benefits for our teachers, and that, that is the attachment to this document here.
There should be, should be two attachments.
What they are, right.
Well, yours.
Yeah, there's, there's the plan and then the trust, two, two separate attachments that can work together.
That is attached to the trust document. And, and that, that teacher retirement plan is what was developed by this board. And, and then the trust documents on top is what you've drafted, or you have...
Well, I, I drafted both the plan and the trust. The plan was derived largely from the information I'd gotten from Superintendent Olson.
Right, right. Well, that was, that was committee that we worked on, that sort of thing, so. I, I just have some questions. What is the, the function of the trust committee? When I read this, it appears to be kind of rather passive. I, I, I don't see, and they kind of wait for a problem and make sure it doesn't happen, or... And what is their, what is their function? Do they make, do they make specific investment decisions? Or do they hire somebody and supervise them to do it? Could you kind of go through that?
Sure. Well, the, the trust committee has the legal obligation to hold and keep safe the monies that are held in this trust until those monies are contributed ultimately to the 403B plan. You know, so it's during this, up to five, fifteen years, assuming the board sticks with that fifteen-year period, when teachers would have acquired a right to have that money be deposited into their 403B account. So until that time, that's the purpose of this trust, the trust committee is legally obligated to make sure that money doesn't get used for any purpose other than to be held for safekeeping and invested as the committee sees fit. So it's really up to the committee to decide how to invest that money in the interim. I would think the committee would want to invest the money in a very safe, you know, preservation of principal kind of manner, so that, you know, given the ups and downs of the stock market, not invest the monies in a way where the money could be lost, you know? So I think the committee's gonna want to invest it, and as I said, a very safe way. It's up to the committee, though, to decide to what extent they might want outside assistance in making the investment decisions. I mean, if the investment committee feels it's up to the task of making good investment decisions on, on, on their own, on the community's own, that's perfectly fine, or if they want to engage at the district's expense, because the district is covering the costs of maintaining the trust. If the, if the committee members feel they need some professional assistance, such as to hire an investment advisor to help advise them as to how to invest the money, they, they could certainly do that. I think a suggestion was even made as to whether the committee should include someone with some professional investment advice, advisory experience on the committee.
That was another one of my questions.
I don't think that's, I certainly don't think it's necessary, you know, I, I think, I, I probably would prefer to see the committee members be, and, and this is, the, the number of four members on the committee is really just a number I pull out of the air. You could decide it should be a different number, but I, I just picked that number with the idea being that it be balanced between two representatives of the administration and two representatives of, of the, two teachers themselves to oversee the trust fund. And I think you might be expecting too much that you'd be able to choose people who, over the course of the, of the life of the, of the trust fund, might have, you know, the kind of investment experience that you, you might want. So I think it, it's logical that they would just consult with, as, as they engage someone to professionally advise them on these matters, as opposed to putting someone, you know, with that advice. If, if you're lucky enough to have within the district, you know, on the administrative side or teacher side, people who have some investment experience, great, but I don't think it's a requirement by any means. It's, it's not typically what would be done in a situation like this. Typically, you would put people in who just take their responsibilities seriously as far as preserving the, the trust fund, and then, as I say, hire someone to the extent they need advice. I don't think a lot of advice, to be honest, is necessary in this case, just because of the preservation of principle being so important here. You know, I don't, I don't see them wanting to invest in any kind of, you know, wild, you know, investment schemes, or even, probably even stocks for that matter. So I, I don't think that you need the services that, all the full range of services that an investment advisor might be, you know, interested in or willing to provide, like, you know, selecting individual stocks, for example. I'm guessing it's gonna be more like perhaps a bond fund or things like that. We can certainly talk about that. What hasn't been, what is mentioned in here is an investment policy. In the committee, one of the responsibilities of the committee will be to adopt an investment policy that will guide them, as well as anyone they engage for advice as to how they want to make, you know...
Who drafts that?
Typically, the invest, any investment advisor that's engaged would draft that for them, but it would ultimately be adopted by the, by the trust, by the committee itself, because it's really the committee's policy. But if they are up to the task of drafting, I think, I, I was asked whether I could help draft it, and, and I could. I could, I'd be happy to help. I haven't done so yet, but I'd be happy to draft a proposed policy for the committee to, to consider. In any case, if you do, if the committee were to engage in an, an investment advisor, that advisor in practice often drafts those policies and, you know, suggests the policy to the committee, but it doesn't have to be...
That advisor would not be a potential vendor.
Well, the, the advisor would be a potential vendor.
Okay.
But, but it's still the, adopted by the committee, so it's, I mean, I've worked in situations where the advisor proposes a policy and the people who would be adopting it think that it needs to be signed off on by, or, let's say, you know, signature line for the investment advisor, and that's really not the case, because it's not the investment advisor's policy, it's the policy of the trust committee itself. They're the ones that need to be adopting it and, you know, approving it and making any changes to it and determining that it's appropriate for the situation.
I have some more if I can.
You can.
You have an invest, they have to develop an investment policy.
Yes.
I'm kind of a rank amateur at this stuff, so I ask very innocent questions here. But, but, so I went out and dug and did a little research. By the way, every place I went, they said, you're the, you're the number one guy to go to, a go-to guy.
That's good.
Did I tell you that?
Yeah, I, I don't recall exactly how Superintendent Olson found me, but, you know, I, there aren't very many people who specialize, attorneys who specialize in employee benefit matters.
Well, the thing I found is that you need an investment policy, but when I talked to them, they said you need three policies. So one is an investment policy, one is a, a fee disclosure, which could be an investment policy, I suppose.
Well, the, the, any...
And the third one is the education policy, what kind of services will they be providing for this? Now, does that go into the RFP, or does that go in the invest, where, where do I find these things?
Sure, sure. Well, certainly any investment advisor that's engaged, if, if one is engaged, it doesn't have to be engaged, but if, if one is engaged because the committee decides they need that professional assistance, there should be obviously a fee disclosure that, that they would be making associated with that, so you know what they're going to cost. And, and an education policy, I, I think, is maybe used in other contexts, you know, in, you may be talking to people who provide investment services when it comes to monies in a true retirement plan and where choices are made to the employees who are covered by the plan, and so you need to educate those employees about the choices that are made available to them, but this is not that kind of an arrangement here. So I'm not, I don't see a need for any education to be provided to anybody. I mean, you, obviously, if the committee members feel they need to be educated, they'll ask questions of the investment advisor, but I don't think there needs to be an education policy dealing with, with that.
There wouldn't be for new teachers on how they might, what, if they have choice of funds, they choose a different direction of investment strategy?
My vision of, of this trust is not that, that the teachers themselves aren't going to be, unless I'm off the mark here, but the teachers themselves aren't going to be making the investment decisions. My, my, my understanding is the trust committee itself is going to be making the investment decisions for, on behalf of all the teachers. And I wouldn't even say whose funds are in the trust, because it's not the teachers' funds yet. These funds are simply sitting in the trust until they ultimately really belong, until the teachers have really earned them by satisfying the fifteen-year, you know, waiting period, at which time the monies will go into a 403B plan or account for their benefit. And then the money will really belong to the teachers and they can invest, you know, according to the options that are available to them under the 403B plan. But in the meantime, teachers themselves really shouldn't, don't need any education, because they don't have any choices available to them.
Susan?
I'm just wondering how this committee, I, I know we would hope to get people who have some interest and skills in this area, but...
Be nice, but not necessary.
Could they, would they perhaps even call on you, I mean, if they want to interview a couple of investment advisors? I guess I'm concerned about the selection process, how they make a decision of who to go with.
Sure. Well, I, I was asked if I could help put together an RFP to, and I certainly could, to, to do that.
If they feel the need to do that.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Susan?
I guess, you know, I'm still kind of confused about the committee. So the committee would be composed of two teachers and two administrators. And their job is to provide, I mean, there's a kind of trustee, the function of the trust committee is a legal application to hold and keep safe the money. And then what's, can you help me understand the role, their role in the investment piece again?
Well, it would be their decision as to how the monies would be invested.
So how would we choose people with that expertise?
Well, you, I, I think you'd be fortunate to find people with that expertise. That's why I'm thinking you're more likely to find, you know, to choose people, responsible people who don't necessarily have investment expertise, but they will then hire, maybe through the RFP process, investment advisor to help advise them.
Okay, so their, their role is, and that piece isn't written in there, so you could have a committee that would choose not to do that?
You could, you could.
What's the board oversight for that?
There isn't. I mean, other than the fact that you, the superintendent could, you know, remove the people that are on the committee. If the superintendent, it's up to the superintendent to decide who's on the committee, the way I've drafted it. And if the superintendent thought that the committee members were not doing a good job, or, you know, didn't, you know, didn't understand their responsibilities, I mean, those, those people could be replaced.
And that language is clear in the trust, that the superintendent is in charge and...
Yes.
And where's the board oversight piece? Doesn't sound like there is one.
Well, that's the way it's drafted, there isn't oversight by the, by the board as a whole. No, it's really the, it's, you're, you're entrusting the oversight of the trust fund to this committee of people who are appointed by the superintendent. And, and the board itself doesn't have any oversight directly, other than perhaps, obviously, you could get reports from, through the superintendent on, on the actions and activities of the, of the committee. It could be reworded, I mean, if it were important to the board to have, maybe even have the appointments made by the board as a whole.
How about approved by the board? How about approved by the board?
That would be fine.
Have you seen that before? What I'm looking for is what you commonly see, because you're the one who's experienced.
Sure, well, there are some unusual aspects of, of your arrangement here, so it's not.
What are those?
Well.
What makes us different?
In this case.
Just the existence of this trust. I mean, I, I custom drafted it for, for this school district here. And, and I'm not aware of any other district that has one exactly like it to, to hold monies during an interim period before they're ultimately contributed to a 403B plan, so.
Did, did you receive kind of guidance on how to put that together? Or did you just kind of rely on your expertise in this area?
I relied on my expertise in the area. I mean, I've drafted other trusts in similar type contexts for entities other than even school districts. I, I did something for a church in a different context, for example, not long ago, but.
And I just have one more. Is, I, I guess, having also clicked on the probate court when we had one, that is where you sit and see the most contentiousness ever, except occasionally. And so I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about. I mean, we're putting a lot of responsibility on four people, am I missing this?
No, you are putting a lot of responsibility on, on them. You, you are. But the responsibility really is just making sure that the monies are sitting, you know, in an appropriate kind of investment account and invested appropriately, into my way of thinking, as I said before, appropriately means very little of any risk. So that's going to very much limit them in terms of, you know, and that would be written presumably into an investment policy that they would adopt that would, you know, guide themselves as to how to make the investment decisions and, and anyone they hire to help them with that. So it's not as if there's, it's a lot of responsibility, but given how much, you know, how much, depending on how much money is in, in the trust, I'm, I'm not sure that it's too much responsibility for a group like this to, to handle. I mean, if, if the board here would like more oversight to the point of having the appointment of these people be subject to board approval, that's, I have no, that makes sense to me, I have no problem with that. I was actually trying to make your lives a little bit easier by having the appointment just be made by the, by the superintendent, but if the board wants to.
I think ultimately it would be easier with board approval because then it's shared responsibility through the appointment rather than individual keys. If anything goes wrong, then there you are. If it goes wrong, here we are. Again, having done trust work.
Sure.
You liked that one, yeah.
Sure, I can, I'd be happy to make that change.
Oh, just carry with.
Yeah, I was intrigued by your comment that this was custom drafted for us. And so the reason I made up for that in my mind is because we care the most about our teachers and want to make sure they have the most excellent retirement. I mean, what is the reason?
Well, I think, that's a good question. I, I think, of course, you know, we're still relatively new into this, you know, post Act 10 world. And, you know, other districts have just, you know, relied on the combination of the Wisconsin retirement system for the primary retirement benefit and then to supplement that with a 403B. And, and you're doing the same, of course, with the only addition being that you're wanting to be kind of proactive, you might say, in terms of for, you know, certain teachers who haven't yet provided 15 years of service to basically set monies aside in this irrevocable trust, which is the unique aspect of what you're doing, that the teachers can count on being there. And that's when, when they, when they satisfy the 15-year period. And, and that, that's what makes you unique. Maybe other districts will follow your lead and do similar such trusts down the road, but so far, you're the only one that I'm aware of.
Because typically, just districts at the time of retirement say, this is the dollar, but you get it.
Yeah.
They don't rely on any time.
Right, right, there's no kind of, no kind of interim funding.
But try, not guarantee that we're going to get a lot, but try.
Susan?
Well, my question was, if they hire an investment counselor, I assume, just like if I have a personal finance manager, and I don't understand much of this stuff either, but I do my obligatory meeting with her once a year and she goes through all the stuff with me and I pretend I understand it. I can tell whether it's going up or down. But, so I assume this, this committee could request biannual reports or quarterly reports? Or, I mean, they could be with the investment advisor as much as they wanted so that they could see it if there's an issue.
Could be monthly, could be, typically, it might be more quarterly.
You'd want to do it more quarterly so there's some time for it to change. But if they see that some aspect isn't going well, they can get an explanation and ask for a change or something. I mean, I would assume that's what would happen.
Absolutely. Dean?
The, I tend to share some with Susan's concern about the composition of the committee. Is there a need, is there a need to have, well, one thing crossed by mine, some of the people, this implies that these could all be current employees? Is there a need to have retire, maybe some people who are already retired and, and who may not be getting the benefits, but are not particularly engaged, would not be in the scope of, you know, that Dan may not pick up the, that, but who may, may serve, but it also brings a different counterpoint. Are, are we talking about people who are, when you put in teachers, they could be former teachers? Could they be, I mean, it says to me by age, age level and, and that sort of thing, it might be a, and, and four seems like. It's an even number.
It's an even number. You know, some people don't like even numbers in case of deadlock, but I, I would think for what they're being asked to do, they're going to be operating by consensus anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
I can certainly, I, I envisioned active teachers just because they, I think, would have more of an interest in how the fund is managed during this period of time while those whose money, for whom the money is set aside for their benefit, you know, till they've achieved that 15-year, years of service requirement, that I, I, I'm not sure, you know, a former teacher would be as interested in it, but we could, but if, if the board were to, in its wisdom, think that it would be good to have, or, or at least open up the possibility for a former teacher to be appointed, I can certainly, you know, say, you know, form, active organ, or, or former teacher and leave it up to superintendent or, again, have it be all subject to your, all, any appointment subject to your approval. I have no problem with any of that. So that really, that's whatever you, whoever you think should be on the committee can be the way it will be. Susan?
Well, I guess I'd be in favor of leaving in active teachers because their retired teachers get no benefit from it, so I agree with you. I think they wouldn't, they wouldn't have anything, anything at stake, so I'd rather see them, yeah.
It should be, it actually, if you ask me, it should be teachers who with less than 15 years of service, because they're the ones who have.
Right.
But they're the only ones who are invested in this.
That's right, that's really what, what I was thinking, yes.
Eventually, they will be gone. And should they be represented at that point, that's my one point.
And as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, having the responsibility through Dan, where the board has oversight through, you know, through Dan is, is reasonable. And we can make requirements on him to report to us. And what I would ask Dan to do is reports, when he puts committee members, you know, who sent us, notifies of that and who they are. And then I presume this is, we've let annual reports be forwarded to the board. To me, that I think is sufficient oversight. But you may not agree with me.
Not, if you're right in the contrary, you have no power to do that. It's got to be in the trust. If you want it reported, it has to be in the trust.
It's, it's a requirement on the.
Section 12 of the trust states that after 30 days from the close of the fiscal year.
There's a report, yes.
To the board?
Trust will deliver to the Menon Grove School District, a written report.
Which is the over, and, and our requirement as a board is that we can require the superintendent to provide that to us, correct?
If we write a policy?
Well, you're going to have to have policy.
You kind of do, because we argued about what the reports were going to be.
All right, so perhaps that language should be changed, Menon Grove School District and School Board.
Well, you are the district.
Or are we the district?
Okay.
Well, I was just going to comment on your, the 15-year thing, because a teacher who's been here 16, 17, 18 years still gets this. It's just that they're, I mean.
The, the monies then leave the trust and go into their 403B.
It leaves, it leaves the trust, it goes into their 401K, but, so I guess they wouldn't have.
They're no longer su.
Yeah, they're no longer benefiting from, okay, I got it, okay, never mind.
Dean?
We have, we have teachers here who have invested through our current plan. And they are in, what's the name of that group, the ABC or something?
Tier one is the grandfather and tier two.
No, 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 we have people who, until we set this up, have been sending.
Through our 403B program.
Right, and that's through what?
Well, we have 16 different vendors.
16 different vendors.
And they'll still have that.
That's centrally administered.
That's separate from this, yeah.
I, I understand that. Now, they may, they may have, my understanding on some of these plans, that they could take the one they've been investing in for 10 years here. And can they convert that to an investment in this trust?
No, no, monies are never going to go from a 403B into this trust.
Because the trust is in a larger pool.
Well, the trust is a larger pool and, and, and the trust really belongs in a, not in a legal sense, but I guess in a, in a tax sense, if I can draw that distinction to the district. You know, the way I drafted this very carefully was to avoid the trust having to file any kind of tax returns with anybody. And so as to basically piggyback off of the district's own governmental and taxes and status. So, so, you know, all the monies are in the trust, even if they're held officially by the trust committee, of course, but they, you know, they, there's no ability for, and, and the district, you know, puts the money into it according to the plan. There's, it's not intended to be a vehicle to, you know, which any individual, teachers can, can put money. I mean, they, they'll continue to be able to put money into the 403B. And when this, and when they reach the.
Their old accounts date with the old.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I got you.
This is, this is separate. This is just a place that district money that we're going to hold for a particular teacher sometime in the future, but remains district money essentially, until they've got 15 years of service here.
Yes.
And this is just a place to stash that money.
Essentially, right. The only thing, having the trust, having it officially in a trust with the trust committee is intended, I assume, to give more assurance to the teachers that the money is really going to come in.
Exactly, we set up the structure.
They don't have to just trust the, the district promising to put that money into the 403B at that, when they reach the 15-year mark.
If I, if I can ask a question of Jared, do we have, or Dan, do we have a definition of year of service? Someplace in the handbook or?
In the retirement, I think, there's page one here. And the plan that he documented, he did, I believe.
It doesn't define, it says 50, he issues his district for 15 years. It doesn't define your service, and I'm wondering, because we have teachers that move, actually, there may be an oversight in the documentation because you say on, in the trust, in item B, recitals, item B, years is defined in TRB plan. I don't see years as defined in TRB plan, but.
Well, the bottom of the first page of the TRB plan, year means the district's fiscal year that ends each June 30.
Yeah. Does that apply in this case to years of service? Because, I mean, how, I don't see how that works. And, and so I'm asking, I mean, do we, do you have to be here full-time? Do we, I mean, how do?
Well, it's prorated on full-time, so you have to, your service is that you work the entire year, but your FTE would determine if you were full-time, part-time.
Okay, and if you, and it doesn't matter what that percentage is, it still counts as a year of service. Even say you're 10%, that still counts as a year of service?
Because the benefit actually is, so for example, on tier three, if we're contributing $1,500 for a full-time, we would only contribute 10% of that 15, so that's where that.
But I'm worried about people losing, losing this benefit because there's this interruption in their years of service. I mean, and the question is, for example, does 0.5 FTE count, does below 0.5 count as a year of service?
It counts as a full year in service.
Okay, and, and my question is, and the problem is, I don't see that in the, in this document.
We can certainly add some language to clarify that.
And then the other question is, does it have to be 15 continuous years? Or do we have a situation where sometimes people come in, go in and out of the district group for various reasons? If that ever happens, it's not a concern, but does it have to be 15 continuous years? And if it's not 15 continuous years, at what point do we cut it off? If it's not 15 continuous years, how long do they have to reach 15 continuous years? Does that make sense?
So on that last part, we had originally, as the committee just said, 15 years is 15 years. So if it takes them, as long as they completed 15 years of service, if they worked a year, took two years off, worked a year, it'll take them a long time to get there, but we're only contributing there. We do have employees that do take a year absence, it might be due to FMLA, it might be childbirth, it might be for an educational study. So we do have that, and it's not necessarily consistent. You don't have to be consecutive at all, so.
Okay, so the money would be accrued in the account, and how do you, how do you, at what point do you say that that teacher has failed to complete 15 years of service? I mean, you know.
Well, if they never, if they physically don't reach 15 years of service. So for example, if we have someone that works 14 years consecutively.
Right.
And decides to resign, that person never reaches 15 years either, and that money stays.
But what if they take that year off?
And then they come back, once they physically work 15 years, that's when we would classify 15.
Right, so how long are you going to hold the money for them?
Once it's in the trust, it's always in the trust.
No, but it comes out if they fail, oh, that's right, it, it does not come back out, it gets distributed to everybody else.
If the trust committee decides that that person has either physically retired or, I mean, there's not going to be a situation where the trust committee is going to say, okay, someone's hit 14 years and they leave, because there's a potential that someone could come back.
Yeah.
There probably is going, there would be some protocols in the place that would allow that before any of that money is designated someplace else. So there hasn't been a, a wing of time.
Yeah, I think we probably should clarify that, though. Put in some ID, some draft, what, what exactly that means. 15 years, it could be you 15, you have to complete 15 years in 20 years, or something like that. Because then you would know at the end of 20 years, then the money is yours to redistribute. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the right thing is here.
That was, going to be my question is, I was understanding this trust then as like a pool of money, but it's not with mini accounts within it that are designated by name for the people, you know. So what you were saying is, it was starting to imply to me that, oh, this is my portion of that trust that's waiting there for me if I take a break, employment, come back and that kind of.
That's how we would set it up as the.
There would be accounting within the pool.
Okay.
A pool for investment purposes, but there would be separate accounting with regard to each teacher.
Okay, and that's why the horizon end, they need to be there, you just have this floating out there designated for a person who may never earn it or come back to claim it.
There comes a point where what we do is we take the money that's designated to somebody and we redistribute it to everybody else. And you have to know when that moment is.
Well, gosh, you could really figure out, okay, if you had to be a certain age to retire and, you know, certain time.
For retirements, it's easy, yeah.
Actually, on a table, it would tell you like how long out you could really expect the person to come back and claim those.
Well, you do have to be 55 to retire.
Certainly for approved leave of absences, of course, they're still an active employee and, you know, they would get credit for those years. The question is, what if they terminate employment?
Yeah.
You know, there's no guarantee they're coming back, so at that point, I think the, you know, idea is they would be redistributed. If the person is rehired at a later date, that would be the question, is do you go back? I think by default, you'd probably say, no, you're a new employee. But if you want to change that, we probably would need to clarify it. I mean, it, it's a pretty.
I know, it would be, probably be a really rare, I think it's probably a rare circumstance, more often you have.
But all of our leave policies work that way.
Everything else works that way.
As a new employee.
Okay, Dean first, yes, Hannah first.
I share some of the concerns that Susan expressed about the composition of the board. My understanding is that, that we would have a business manager, a fiscal responsibility to make sure these funds are handled, and that presumably would go to our business office. You conceive of that person being on the trust or servicing the trust?
He was going to leave that up to the wisdom of the superintendent here. I mean, if he thought it would be best to have the Director of Business Services to be one of the trustees, that would be perfectly fine.
My thought would be, it should be servicing the, the trust itself. Because presumably they, that person, I hate to say this, would come, could come and go and that sort of thing. I'm also concerned about the fact that most of the people in this trust are teachers by large part, and yet the trust fund committee has two, two administrators and two teachers. If you had four, why, it seemed to me that the proportion would, I think there ought to be administrators, because are they participating?
Is it right now?
They're not, they're not participating. So the question would be, why would administrators then be on the trust itself? As long as it were competently managed and the superintendent had, had oversight? It would seem to me that the people who are on the trust and are going to benefit from the trust, you could use those four positions, you'd get some wider range of, of ages and participation in it as well. You follow what I?
Yeah.
Dean? Can I clarify, did that, did that particular part of the? Can I clarify, did that, did that particular part of the, um, the plan come from you? Or did it come from, that came from you?
From me. It was completely arbitrary on my part. The number, the number of four, and two administrators and two teachers, so.
I just wanna make sure we're asking the right person for this question.
Yes, yeah, so I mean, I, you, you are wiser than I am about who you think would be best to be on the, the committee.
You really haven't seen us on TV, have you?
So.
Okay.
So if you think it should only be teacher representatives appointed by the superintendent, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Or three in one.
Or three in one.
Or, or three in one, or whatever you think is.
Any opinions on that?
Do I have one, or?
You have one.
Well, I, I, I think that it ought to be, it ought to be somewhat proportional to the number of beneficiaries on there.
Teachers.
I, I would think that since the administrators are not in the plan, is that correct?
As in, no.
Yeah, they're not in the plan at all. It would seem to me that the, that the trust committee ought to be composed of people who are beneficiaries of the plan itself, but have the advice of our business manager and any, and anyone else on it. Another question I have is, is that, uh, I, when I asked around, you know, I probably asked my son a couple of these questions. But, but he, he said that it'd be nice to have people on this committee who, uh, who had some savvy in the investment field and.
That would be nice.
Not, not raw amateurs.
That would be nice, but not required. Sorry, this is in my humble opinion.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, uh, I, I would see that would be nice with a vendor, because they could talk the language easier with them and so forth.
Right.
Then the attendant to that, if, if we had community members who are publicly spirited, and would want to advise a group like this, is that advisable or not? We have, we have people who have been on state investment boards, and, and Dan knows somebody, I believe, who's been on the UW Foundation, and, and that, there are people like that who could talk this language that are there, or are those too narrow of interests or vested interests?
Well, I probably would leave it up to the trust committee's own judgment as far as whether they feel they need some advice and to whom to consult for that purpose, whether it be anyone from the community or otherwise. And if they don't think they need assistance, then I wouldn't force it upon them.
Okay, make it available.
Sure.
If they want it, and to go to any source that they want.
Sure, absolutely. Carrie?
Mr. Anderson indicated earlier that he's available till eight, and I want keeping an eye on that for, for your sake. What has to happen next tonight?
I appreciate that.
Well, it's on, it's on the agenda for possible approval, but we do not need to approve it tonight. We can, and what I would, would ask is if there's specific issues or changes that you think need to be addressed before we can approve this. Not you personally, but the board thinks can, uh, address before we can approve this. If we can make a list of those, so they can be forwarded and cleaned up, and then, or if there's not, we can go ahead and approve, approve this.
Thank you. And the one thing that was hanging out there was the question of continuous service versus breaks in employment. And I did feel that that was something I would like to see handled with more detail about addressing that particularly before we approve.
Okay.
And that was the question I had, was regarding to, like, what if there's a layoff, for example, due to a budget reduction for a year, and then that person comes back? I would hate to see that person lose their retirement.
Right, and I, and I think that there might, well, maybe this is a little bit complicated discussion. There might be different treatments for different, uh, different ways of the separation occurred versus a layoff versus a.
Well, right, I was thinking of specifically a layoff due to a budget reduction.
Right, and we might treat it differently from other.
For its cause, it would be different.
Exactly, exactly. Or a leave of absence versus, well, at least if his absence is still employed, you know.
Right, right, so it might be that we need some more language.
I think we need some more language, and I think what we need to do is to sort of take our depth, our language elsewhere for years of service, and perhaps insert it in the document, if we have such language, which I, no, you don't think so? What defines a year of service? Dean?
Could I make a recommendation that, that we send through you or to Dan? Additional questions, inquiries, or suggested changes, and that they could be consolidated and.
Okay, I was gonna, I was gonna say if we could just do that in the next couple of minutes, but.
I think, because I think we need to have consensus on what changes we want. I don't think, we don't want individuals requesting changes that the rest of us might not like.
Right, right, so, for example, right now.
Well, he has to leave, and I would have more, so I.
What, what?
I don't know that we have.
What's your?
We have some consensus.
Okay, so you have a concern about the, the composition of the board, of that, of this, of the board. Does anybody else share that concern?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Minor, but why is there four and not five? I mean, you can't get, you can't get a.
Is, that consensus number, I was just saying.
Again, it was completely arbitrary on my part. I was just looking for some, some balance in terms of, you know, administration, oversight and control and, and teacher representation, but really, if, if you think five is a better number.
Five or three, I think.
Well, well, I think part of the point was, you don't want five to two votes on something like this, you want consensus.
Consensus.
If you have four, you're gonna make a consensus, you have to get consensus. So I thought there was benefit to four. The only change I might do is maybe three teachers and one administrator. That, that might make more sense.
I kind of agree with that, so we would take that into consideration. Susan, you had a concern about the reporting, whether or not it's sufficient to report through the superintendent. I understand, I would ask, does anybody else share that concern?
I actually have, yeah, and I'll do that one first. I don't share that concern.
Yeah, I'm, I think through this room is insufficient. Dean?
I, I would just suggest that we not necessarily have to have consensus on everything tonight. I think I'd like to send in some questions and then maybe discuss them and get some responses to them. Do it deliberately. We've spent months and months to hammering this out, and we have tuning numbers, and I think that we ought to get all the questions on the table, discuss them among ourselves, and then submit them.
Is, is.
And then build, then ask consensus.
Is that a consensus? Is that, or is that where we wanna go, or is it?
That's okay, I mean, should we probably come back maybe May thirteenth or May eleventh or something?
Well, I would, I would suggest that not, we don't spend any of his time until we have all our ducks in.
Till we.
Internally have all ducks in a row, so we'll come, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, my, my suggestion would be, just to keep, keep the process moving smoothly, is to, I mean, you're certainly, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have, but in the end, I'm, I'm a scribbler and gonna write it up the way that you direct me to, assuming that it makes, you know, sense to me. And so, some of the questions that you may be putting to me, maybe questions that you should put to yourselves and make a decision on, either as a whole or a committee, you know, the committee that worked on this effort in the, in the first place, perhaps. And then think about, for example, how you wanna handle, you know, when, when do you determine that someone has not, is not gonna satisfy their fifteen years, for example? I mean, there's any number of ways that could be done, and it, probably not, not to be me who's deciding it, it'd be, you know, you or a committee, so.
We have to get our act together a little bit.
So, can I? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, but we ain't gonna say.
Can I just ask one? Um, so, is it possible under the language in this document for the committee to decide as a committee not to hire an investment person and do that themselves? Okay, so I'm just curious, just talking about it. I mean, how can we?
Okay, that, we can discuss that at the next.
We've, we've agreed to take it offline, so let's take it offline.
I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want to say that's considered.
Yeah, if that's a concern to you, we could certainly, you know, say they shall engage an investment advisor. I purposely.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I, my recommendation is to give broad flexibility to the committee to take into account, you know, that it may vary in terms of how much they feel they need help, you know? You, you may be lucky to find some people that have enough, feel like they can do it on their own, and have enough expertise, in which case to compel them to engage an investment advisor, I'm not sure it makes, makes sense. So I, I, my own preference would be to give some flexibility to the committee.
Eventually, you're going to want to submit a proposal, right?
Dean? Probably, yes.
You'd need an investment advisor to do that?
Well, to, to do the RFP, well, you wouldn't need an investment advisor to prepare the RFP. I'd be happy to help you, you know.
Okay, good.
All right.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like me to come back in a future day, I'd be happy to get, sorry, I have to address a question.
Yeah, um, I was gonna take five minutes, but if you wanna do that.
Just on this subject.
Okay, on this subject.
Yeah, if we could just clarify before we leave this agenda item. Jared, if you could talk about the timeline and about what this does, you know, by not approving tonight, what has to happen, you know, with this moving forward?
Um, so, once the trust and the documents approved, that's when we physically have the retirement plan. That's when we can physically issue the RFP, that's when we can physically appoint the investment committee. So, no 403 matching is gonna happen until the plan is approved. The two million dollars that we did borrow will continue to sit in an investment of the district. It's not, no compounding interest is happening, so, I mean, it's, nothing is gonna move forward until we have this approved. So, I mean, obviously, we do have staff that's asking when they can do the, the 403 matching and the years of service reward and stuff like that. But tier one is continuing, so individuals that are retiring this year, that will still moving along. But as of that, we still don't have a retirement plan.
Can we clarify, though, with, as much as we wanna get this moving for our staff, the matching is on calendar year, not fiscal year?
Yep, so it's not like they're gonna miss out on, since with the fiscal year coming to close on June thirtieth, that they're gonna miss out on a thousand dollars. The thousand dollars runs from January to December. It's just that potential.
So there's no time here?
No, I mean, so, if you look at the, the matching, they have, they're not gonna lose a thousand dollars if it's not approved by the end of June, because that goes through the end of December. But I do know we have staff members that are already contributing to a 403B and, you know, the, the, the interest side of things. But for sure, no, no loss of a thousand dollars for a full-time teacher. It's just delays when that money starts getting deposited on the behalf.
Dean?
I, I just, I think the OPET committee, which is an extension of the handbook committee, spent a lot of time putting together the business plan. I think we did a good job. He's basically said, has said that. And I think that the overriding trust document here has many questions for us, and I don't think we ought to rush to judgment on it, but we ought to get it, we ought to get all of our stuff and get a consensus on it, on how we wanna do it, and, and have a thorough discussion, and not tonight.
Yeah.
And I would agree, we just wanted to communicate that, just so staff.
I, I don't think that there were that, we have that much, that far to go on this.
No, no, I don't either.
I, well, I was just gonna suggest that you request that questions come to you by a certain dates, and, and that we do put this on the agenda for May thirteenth, so we can keep moving along, because I, staff is anxious about it.
Yeah, absolutely. If you could send, if you have concerns, go home and send them, send them to me this week, so they're, because they're fresh in your mind right now. Send them to me this week, and I will then collect them, and we'll try and, and we'll move on this, not move on this, I'm sorry, we'll discuss it May thirteenth, come up with a consensus to send out, and hopefully then we can have everything lined up, and then we can, we can have them back one more time for final questions and hopefully approve it. All right, yes, Susan?
So Peter, would you just clarify for me one more time? So, because this is customized, there is no prototype for this?
I heard that, same as you did, yes, this, this today.
Okay, you guys are, okay, so, I turned to Joyce and I said, how would you like to be appointed this committee? I mean, you think, okay, so I'll bring that as a concern. Are there any other resources that we could rely on? So what do, to learn more about how a trust like this is built? Other than to just pick your brain, you could pick your brain.
Well, I think what he, I mean, definitely the trust has been developed from a, on a roll. And the reason it's different than others is that other school districts' trusts doesn't necessarily, when they use the trust, they're putting money away like we did before. You remember, we currently have a trust, but it's not a trust committee. It's just we put money in, it's a pass, so they continue to receive, you know, aid from DPI. The other part of it is, is our retirement plan is we're moving to the 403B concept in the trust. Many school districts are saying that once you get your fifteen years and once you retire, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars. We're saying that each year that you work for us, we're gonna deposit that, and we're actually gonna pay when you do it. We're not gonna wait till you retire, and that's the biggest difference between what he's seeing out there and what we're doing right now, is that most districts are saying, when you retire, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars. That does not include that we didn't invest any of that money along the way. Our trust is physically taking that money, putting it in a trust, you're marking it for your name, and then when you hit fifteen years, then we're gonna roll it over into a 403B.
And it's building interest.
And it's building.
We're essentially.
You assume it's building interest. We've got two teachers and.
I, I, hang on, I understand, we understand that. Let's have a discussion on May thirteenth.
So can I, can I ask you just one follow-up question to that, to basically what you're saying? So if I'm a teacher, my choice is to put the thousand dollars into a trust being overseen and administered by two teachers and two administrators, versus maybe going to somebody like, I don't know, Fidel or.
So, so.
Having them do it.
The thousand dollar matching goes into your individual 403B, so whatever vendor you have chosen, it does not go into the trust.
Right, right.
They go wherever. The fifteen hundred dollars that we're paying on behalf of a teacher, that the district's contributing, is going into the trust. So the purpose of the trust is that we're actually requiring the district to pay that fifteen hundred dollars. It's not the employee's money until they reach fifteen years. So it's that safe hole, it's that guaranteeing that after fifteen years, that money should be there, where.
But there's no guarantees, because it's invested.
Well, no, it's invested.
It's invested, but it's at least the intent.
Which the teacher just brought up during the.
I get it.
And, but I don't know what the alternative is. I mean, those people can put it in CD.
This question's already been settled, because it's already a piece of the plan.
This is what you.
So, I, I don't see any reason to belabor this point, because it's already.
Are there any more questions?
Okay, is there a way we can remove ourselves from legal liability on this issue?
Yeah, by not adding our oversight.
No, that's not correct. It's the law.
Legal liability. This is, this is.
Not worried about it, I.
We ha, and put money in trusts, in trusts, in investments all the time, and, yes, there's risk, there's always risk with those. There isn't any way to get around that, as far as I know, to get around that, there's no way to get around ultimately, get around this risk. Unless we put it, gold put under the wall.
Yes, and a trust, we do. It's a guaranteed interest rate.
The bottom line of any agreement you have, there's risk.
What's the interest rate?
There's risk.
And you may lose your money.
Two point five percent.
And, and that is why we want to have a board that has teachers on it, so that they can see this actively manage what's going on.
You may wanna talk to people who do, who do these things, but who have, but who have no, will not be in the, will not be a bidder, because they don't do government business. And there are some people, some of these firms do not do government business.
I'd like to take five minute recess. Let's see, um, actually, back to item D, the consent agenda. If I could have a motion approved with consent agenda?
Actually, do we, well, you wanna mention the one resignation, we already kind of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, thank you. I would like to make special mention that in the consent agenda, agenda under resignations, you have a resignation from our GDS associate principal, Mike Whistler, and the reason for the resignation is that he has a new opportunity as a principal in the Marinette School District. And so we're excited for Mike and his family, his new opportunity, and thank him for his service to the district, and wish him well.
Now I'd, now I'd ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any, it's consensus, you can discuss it, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished, item F, item G. Discussion and possible approval of student fee schedule for two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
All right, this is something that we're gonna do annually, and so you see the proposed fee schedule. There was a slight amendment, I think that you received an email from the original one that was posted. And so there is some, you know, just minor adjustments, but essentially the goal is to not to raise fees. This is something that we do in the future, we need to take a closer look at with some of these fees, whether they really belong here as opposed, you know, things like field trips and, and other, you know, pieces. But for this point, till we have further study, we think it's appropriate to essentially stay status quo on our, our fee schedule. And Jared can certainly answer any specific questions as well. Yes?
This is one I read last night, and I came with a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm concerned about taking the yearbook out of a required fee, where all students, including low-income students, would receive a year. including low-income students, would receive a yearbook automatically, and moving it into a different category within the fees that might add additional administrative time to figure out who ordered one, and who paid for one, and who's going to get one, as opposed to what we're doing now, where every student gets one. And also, the social, the social impact of the haves, have-nots, with, in particular in the elementary level, which students would automatically get a yearbook. And I can picture, from my own children's experience in elementary school, that there's an academic, social, kind of community experience with what the teachers choose to do with the yearbooks when they first arrive. And I had the question about what others thought would be the impact of making yearbooks something that not all of our elementary school children would receive. And I feel differently about the elementary school $7 yearbook than I do about the high school $35 yearbook. So, I kind of wanted to bring that tonight, I was ready to bring that, and kind of see what other thoughts were out there about that.
So, the rationale is, is that to require every student to purchase a yearbook just doesn't make sense. It's not a fee. In fact, it's probably questionable whether you can do that, but there's only certain things that we can legally charge fees for. And so, to require it, you know, doesn't make sense. We still have our fee waiver policy in place for anything like this as well. So, families with financial need still can receive, and have these waived, and still receive, you know, yearbooks.
I understand that they could have a fee waived if it's a required fee, but not if it's considered an optional item. And I would have guessed that the yearbook would then become perceived as an optional item, if it was moved. And I saw it as a supply, I mean, something that the classroom teachers were going to use during the actual class. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
How do teachers view that?
In my, I mean, others can speak to this as well, but in our experience, the last few years, the teachers, when yearbooks are distributed in the elementary school, they use them in their classroom, and the kids not only sign each other's, but they have teachers sign them, and they talk about the year, and they reflect on their community. And it's part of the academic community experience, not just handed out after school. Yeah, and I feel for the children who wouldn't have one, and that could require some other changes.
Do you have any comments on that?
I wasn't aware of that practice. I mean, a yearbook's a yearbook, it's something that, you know, it's not part of the school curriculum. I mean, if it's used in that way, you know, that, that, you know, I guess that, that's, you know, good, but, you know, it's an item that's not part of the core curriculum.
Intentionally, all of our fees that we charge should be waived if a family is in need. One of the specifics, especially when you look at, like, instrumental rentals, you know, if you, you know, we shouldn't be excluding a fourth-grade string students if we're doing a district-wide strings and concerts.
Yes.
So, those all should be waived fees if a family has issues or comes forward with financial need.
But would that apply to your book?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I share that concern, and I even share it for the upper grades, because I think it's, you know, even though they don't do it in classes, at the middle school, I know, the last, those last couple days, it's a big deal when they all get their yearbooks, and there's time spent, they all go to the gym and sign them. And my recollection is pretty much, as, as every kid has one, so they're pretty much all excited about getting people to sign them, and it's, it's kind of a big deal. So, I'm a little worried about parents who might think, "My kid doesn't need one, I'm not going to buy it," and then come the end of the year, that child's going to feel very left out, because they don't have one. And how would we know, how would we go about figuring out which kids on free and reduced lunch might want them? I mean, unless we specifically have a process for figuring that out beginning of the year, because I assume you have to, at some point, you have to order these, and you have to know how many you can get. And then, there's always the issue of the parent, of the kids who are not on free and reduced lunch, but are running that borderline, where the parents may not choose. I, I just have, I have a lot, I, well, my other question was, I thought, did I understand this to come out of the climate survey, that parents act, some parents actually requested this, to be able to opt out of yearbooks, or where is this coming from?
What was the motivation?
No, motivation is, Jared, I looked at it and said, "This is ridiculous. Why can't, why are we making someone buy a yearbook?" By the way, we don't use free and reduce status for that, we can't do that.
Okay.
You know, so, essentially, any parent that presents, you know, to the principal or the appropriate person, saying, "I have a financial need," we waive it. And so, it, it's just a matter of, and I'll tell you, I'm a parent of someone who chooses not to have a yearbook, a high school student.
Okay.
And so, the schools say that you have to buy one, it's just, it just doesn't make sense.
Susan?
I'm thinking, Dan, it isn't so much, "You have to buy one," it's more, it's a part of the culture that we have here. It's part of going back and remembering and seeing it in our reunions and the foundation, and trying to build that, where have you been, and where are you going, and what was the name of your favorite teacher? I understand the fee issue, and I'm, I show the concern. I, I think it's, it may be, you know, maybe I can apologize and say, maybe it's more of a mom thing, and that, you know.
Maybe my kid, but one time.
I, I don't, I don't know. It's that, you do see this, some kids will come and just throw it, and never look at it again. So, how many of you, when you get your free yearbook, go through it? And there's a kid that could have, that could have had that. No, I'm talking about the ones we get every year from, from.
Oh.
So, I'm, I'm just saying.
I don't dare show mine.
I don't know that we can do a personal analysis, but it does concern that we might create a situation where students would not receive.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned a legal concern. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. There are very clear things in which the schools can charge fees for. Okay? One of the things in the statute, believe it or not, is textbook rental, okay, and which we do include. So, you cannot just charge a general school fee. You can charge for textbooks, you can charge for consumables, which we do. We charge, you know, for resale items, you know, things like, you know, rentals, or when students are actually purchasing things that they get to keep. But those resales, and that's really, those are a little bit different than fees. I mean, that, you're buying something, and those are still, you know, choices. So, I guess it really just comes down to, is, is this, you're purchasing something, you know, versus it being part of the required for course.
Yeah. And, I'm trying, I'm trying to get at this legal issue, but your concern is that this is not, is not legal for us to make this a required fee?
I would say that's a concern. I won't, you know, say specifically that you couldn't find a way to, to do that, but there's a lot, a lot of questionable, you know, fees at many school districts, you know, charged.
Susan?
Could we try this for year, but really highlight for parents? Well, for instance, if parents have two high school kids, for example, maybe they only want one yearbook for their family. So, I could, I could see this as being attractive to people, to give them the option. But really, make a point to people when they register their kids, and maybe make a point to the kids, that this, that the yearbook is being handled differently, and that if you want one, you really have to let us know now. And if you want one, and your family feels they can't afford it, I mean, if we could find a way to make that clear to people, and there's still at least people who won't see how to get that. But try it for a year and see how it goes, and I, because I could envision, I know there are some middle school kids who, even though what I just said is true, they, they literally all go down to the gym, and they spend time signing yearbooks, but some kids lose them, and, and they, or they just staple a bunch of papers together and use them. So, they could do alternative things. I mean, that, that's totally possible. So, I, I might be willing to try it for a year, but I, but if we do that, I would just like to make it very clear to parents that, that this is a change, and that they really need to pay attention and order one of these, if they, if they want one for their child.
Well, I think Jared can speak to that, about how that would have worked on the ordering, the registration.
So, a lot, the district have, or the last couple years have moved to the online system, so, all those fees would be listed out there, and optional fees would be listed as well. But then, we also, like, for example, the 4K yearbook is not something that has ever been included, and so, that's normal stuff that goes home, and we would work with each of the buildings to make sure. I think the biggest area where you would find, the hardest part of communication is going to be at the high school. You know, realistically, especially the elementary, they're very good about sending papers home, parents are very good about looking at order forms that are coming home, but we're going to obviously encourage them, and we would put that in the information that we sent home to parents for registration. Just an example, at the high school, I was talking to Ms. Thames, who is the yearbook advisor, and when we have a required fee of, what was it, $35, over the last years, has it averaged about 110 yearbooks not being picked up.
Really?
So, that.
That's, well, that's significant to know. That's awful to know.
Fortunately, that's a lot, you know. Now, is that because they didn't want it, or did the kids just, "Mom and dad paid for it, and the kids just didn't go"? Don't know that, but, you know, we look at.
That's a significant number, though. It's an argument in favor of trying.
Just, just one second. Currently, when I go and pay my fees, is the yearbook listed as a separate line item, as a required fee, or is it just, there's a total basic school fee?
Just a total basic.
It doesn't show that it's.
It did not show that you had a yearbook.
Okay. Jeff was next.
Oh, go ahead. Mine's beyond that.
Yeah, so, the $7 for elementary school kids, to me, could become part of the consumable supplies, because of the way it's used, and the kids signing it, you're not going to turn it back in afterwards, you've used it, it's most part of the activity. $35 for a book that you have as part of your personal library after, I, I still feel, I wanted to repeat, I'll try not to repeat myself too much, because that's very annoying, but I repeat what I said earlier, that I feel differently about the elementary schools than the high schools. And if we felt that $7 was reasonable to wrap into the consumable fees for elementary, and you could make the argument whichever way you want to go with middle school, I would treat that separately in high school, I could appreciate, especially knowing over 100 books aren't picked up.
How many, how many of you are sort of not supportive of this change at this point? I'm trying to figure out.
I'm not supportive of.
What did?
Breaking it out and having it be optional for elementary schools. You have to then order them, and there's a whole bunch of logistics with that, that are different than just all you could send them.
Well, it seems to me that, from what I've, what I've seen with regard to a lot of kids who free and reduce lunch, or, or different cultural backgrounds and things like that, that the opportunity to get a violin, the, it's a process of engaging kids in school and a factor that they may succeed in, you know, in mathematics, because they can engage in other things, and the arts is one way to do it. And I would just, I, I don't want to wrestle with every possible program. What do we do when a kid can't pay the basketball fee, or the hockey fee? The hockey.
They have.
I think, you know, it must be payoffs for coaches, or something like that. I don't think you're right.
Definitely.
Okay. But, but I, 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 I think, I think that a lot of these things have just grown up like topsy, and I, I, I guess I'd like to see us come back after you brought it to administrative council and kind of wrestle with these issues, because I'd like to see things, to deal with how we get more kids engaged into school, and the kind of things that.
Okay, so, those fees that you're, that you're talking about, we have supports for those, for what you're talking about, with basketball and hockey and so on, for students. We have, we have supports for those fees. I mean, is that, is that what you're asking, Matt?
Well, what I'm saying is, does, is does, can this fall in the same category? Didn't I say?
We believe that it does fall in the same category, and that there will be support for kids who need help with that. We believe that we can do that.
If there's any badge, we need just like a field trip, as, you know, the field trip letter comes home, it's, it's part of the curriculum, and if a family is unable to pay for that, the school finds a way so that child can go on that field trip.
And we would do the same thing with the, with the yearbooks.
We should do that with any fees that we're charging for a school district.
Is that sufficient?
I'll ask Carrie.
My worry was moving it out of the basic, the category that had that said, "Basic school fee," putting it separately, make it a different kind of.
I, I assure you, you're concerned about have and have-nots, from a student point of view. Jeff?
Well, my question is, though, overall, because I know we talked about getting rid of fees, because it's very expensive to go to free public education, right? I don't know how deep we've gotten into that. I mean, I think we would need to break everything down, see how many we give away because of, I don't know what our protections are, how many people just don't pay, is that a, I'm sure there are people that just don't pay, right? I mean, and see where, what, how much money is this really costing us?
To have fees at all.
To have fees at all, right. You know, I don't, I mean, what is the, I mean, if I can't pay, if I can't pay 80, like, if I can't pay for field trips and books, and, like, a lot of people aren't comfortable coming going, "I can't pay every single time, so what do you do?" And if you don't reach, and as Susan mentioned earlier, if you don't reach that free and reduced, what if you're just here? You're almost worse off than if you are on free and reduced.
Can Jared answer to this question?
So, yes, technically, all a parent has to do is notify the principal that they're having a financial need. By law, that we're not allowed to just automatically use the free and reduced application. So, how we go about that is, we have the free and reduced application, and we add a waiver to the back of it that says, "Do you want to share this with other programs?" If a family, or if the family fills that out, and they qualify, it's automatically waived. Other than that, when you get right above that federal income level, then the district has to. Now, we do collect about $300,000 worth of student fees to the district. That's all over the board, because some of these fees do go up into Student Activity Council, like field trips, those are more of an in and outs. One of the things is, is that when you, I mean, the concept of a consumable, that you can justify that, as long as you're breaking it up for DPI. But for the most part, when we had, before moving to Infinite Campus online payments, we had a lot of not sufficient funds and stuff like that. How, right now, we have hardly any families that don't pay their fees. They're either paying their fees, or they're notifying us that they're having financial issues, and we waive that.
What's, what's the dollar amount of the waived fees?
We don't have a dollar amounts.
You don't have a, you don't know, I mean, what is the potential to collect of?
I, I don't have that with me, and I don't, I haven't collected that since I've been here.
Is it 10%? Is it 50%?
Well, I, I don't know.
I mean, I, I, we do a lot of things throughout the year, too, right? And I could understand some parents being like, you know, "I can't afford this, and I can't afford this, this, and this, but I'm not going to go to the school every single time."
Right.
You know, my kid's just going to have to learn to go without, and the poor kid is going without. And I don't know how we fix it, because I understand the budget problem we are in also, but.
Well, unless, unless you, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I understand where you're coming from. I don't think, I mean, I think it's a, a discussion beyond the discussion of a particular fee schedule that we're at. And it's, what you're talking about is coming up with $300,000 to deal with that issue. Dean, and then Susan.
Oh, I was going to move approval.
Dean, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was, oh, I'm sorry.
I said Dean.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, Dean, I'm sorry.
Dean, you had to go first.
Well, it, it, it would seem to me that, that there's a lot of management and oversight to these fees that are, that are maybe more costly than, than the effort in some cases. In the particular case here, why can't the teachers at that school simply say, "We use this yearbook as the curriculum material? Over and done." I mean, I mean, you have disposables elsewhere, don't you?
Right. Consumable.[1646.83]
Oh, courses.
Disponables, not disposables. We eat them without throwing them away.
Susan. I guess I think, given, given the thought that's already gone into this, and given that I know you two are working hard on trying to get rid of even more fees if we can figure it out in the budget, which is hard to see when we're getting tighter and tighter budgets. I would go ahead and move approval of the student fee schedule, schedule for two thousand fifteen sixteen as presented.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that?
I'll second.
You're only seconded. Do we have discussion, further discussion? Carrie?
Am I allowed to make an amendment?
You absolutely are.
We can also discuss.
Because, you know, I'm still.
That's the way to do it.
Mulling the possibility of making an amendment to not make the change to the fee schedule from last year's to this year's, but to instead stay with last year's top part on how the basic school fee was defined.
Essentially move.
Or certain rhythms or.
And yeah, thank you. And, thank you, thank you, yes. And I'm really looking at from K to eight to preserve the yearbook within the basic school fee.
Are there any other changes other than the yearbook?
For the basic fees?
Yeah.
No.
Between the, essentially moving, your motion, if I can, may I restate your motion? Would be to move the yearbook fee out of the other fees and back into the basic school fee.
For grades.
K eight.
For grades, K eight only.
Could I ask just for, could we just not call it yearbook and put it in as consumables?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make my amendment say that?
Yeah, so it's not so.
Yes, you may.
Specific.
I think we said that about twenty minutes ago.
No, but nobody, nobody moved.
Yes.
Okay, there is a number, we need a second.
That's right.
Do you have a second?
Actually, I'll second it.
I thought it was, okay.
Well, maybe it was. No, there's a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendments? Do we understand the amendment? And right now, we would be voting on the amendment to the fee schedule as presented.
For K eight.
Yes, and it's to move the yearbook, I'm sorry, to add seven dollars to the basic school fee.
Consumable fee.
For the grades, K through eight, just checking, K through eight, and, and use that.
For consumables.
Consumables designated to the yearbook as part of that. Okay. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're back to the main motion, which is to approve the fee schedule now as amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item, discussion of possible approval of T four K provider contracts for the next school year.
You know, Jared expand, but this is essentially standard school contracts from current situation.
Yep, and all three sites that are here, two of which in Cottage Grove, one is in Menona, have been with the program since the beginning. No increase to fees, do the budget, and Connie has the opportunity, had an opportunity to recruit as well, so.
Any questions? Susan?
I, well, I was going, I'd move approval of the T four K contracts for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year with Kids Safari Learning Center, Learning Ladder Preschool, and Childcare, and Immaculate Heart of Mary School as presented.
A second? I have a second, thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Have there been, has there been any changes, significant changes in enrollment? In any of these programs, or what is approximately a enrollment at these, at the offsite programs?
A hundred and three.
A hundred and three?
Offsite.
Is that up or down, or?
Um, it's up because that's typically where our opener room had went in the past. Um, we've always been, our in-house, so last year, we opened an additional section at Winnetqua for four K, and that was primary to the, we did lose one site before we had two sites in Menona. And so that one site's AM session came over to Winnetqua. So we have not added any sites, or added any sections to the sites over the last three or four years. So it has increased a little bit due to the fact that we had, had a larger opener room, like twenty-five. And this year, we're looking at possibly ten at this time, so should stay pretty fast growth.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion to approve the T four K provider contracts?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Peter, can I, can I just ask, again, I, I think it's really helpful, I know this is just standard, it's almost consented on this stuff, but I think it would be helpful, this is an opportunity for us to kind of know how many kids are each site and just kind of see if there's, I mean, we're looking for growth, and we're looking at growth in this district. And this is a way that we can keep better informed. You know, I know Connie is usually here, and she said, oh, we've got this and this, and this is why we have this, and this is why I want to do this. And there's never any question about approving this, but, you know, how many sections do we have at Winnetqua right now? How many sections do we have at Immaculate Heart of Mary? How many do we have at Kids Safari? I mean, it's parent choice, but there was clearly a point in time when we had limited space for four K at Taylor Prairie. So I just think it's a good way for us to keep informed if we keep, if we get the information, there's this thing.
I, I thought that information was, some of it was in our enrollment form that we just got a couple of weeks ago. I mean, it has all the numbers of, at the various sites, so it's there.
The nice thing is.
And we're out of order discussing after a motion's been passed, so.
Right.
Right, we, however, in the past, we have often done that.
Fudge the line a little bit, I know.
Yes.
Actually, I can just bring it up again.
You can find the enrollment form, you'll see it all there.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Item three, discussion of possible approval of aquatic employee pay rates for two fifteen sixteen.
And Jared can talk about the, you know, the proposal, but the rationale for why this one's separate compared to other employee groups is the timing of, of needing to hire, you know, lifeguards. And so with that, Jared, provide a little bit of detail for the rationale and the recommendation.
Sure. So last year, we did bring forward an increase in these wages as well. The wages before that had not necessarily increased in at least three years prior to that. However, over the last couple of months, we've been unable to retain some of our swim instructors or our lifeguards, and along with not being able to hire them. So we had to close the pool to our community a few times, which is obviously not what we want to do. Our aquatics director has been working up to seventy hours covering those. We always want two lifeguards on for safety purposes. So what we decided to do is we asked the individuals that were either turning us down for offers or leaving the district, and they were leaving the district to go to the Madison Community Rec Program. And so we reached out to the Madison Community Rec Program, and they were leaving due to wages. And their wages at the, the starting is eleven dollars and twenty cents, and we were only paying eight dollars. We were also losing a few to the YMCA, and so we reached out to them, and their average is about nine dollars and sixty cents starting. So our lifeguards come out of Fund eighty, and this impacted that budget by just shy of five thousand dollars if we make these increases because we do have lifeguards all over the board based on years of experience. I will explain a little bit of our pay rate guide. It's, since, how this works is, we would be asking to increase our starting wages for, based on years of experience. So anybody with less than one year would come in at that nine seventy-five. If they had up to two years, we would give them ten dollars an hour. We pay up to a maximum of five years. So once we have hired an employee in the aquatics program, then it's based on if they have additional certifications. For each additional certification they have, we give them a fifty cent stipend added on. So if we had an aquatics employee come in at two years, and they had the, a, an additional certification than just the basic lifeguarding, they would get ten dollars and fifty cents. It's not common to have a whole bunch of other certificates, but it was a way to encourage our lifeguards to continue their education. So then what happens is they do get a twenty-five cent increase after they work two hundred and fifty hours. Then again, at five hundred and fifty, so it's a continuous, it's encouraging them to work. It's also rewarding them for, you know, stepping up and, and working, because most of these individuals are not individuals that have graduated from college. They're our high school students, and we also have to be able to compete, you know, with McDonald's and stuff like that. And eight dollars an hour is not what, you know, the other, even non-aquatic programs are, you know, paying their employees. The other part is, when we had originally done the wages study last year, we had looked at all the surrounding school districts with aquatic programs. Well, we are in the ballpark with our eight dollars for them, but they're not competing with the Madison Rec Program. They're pretty much, you know, Oregon, they're competing with just their local establishments. Stone's the same way. We are pretty much surrounded by the YMCA and Madison Pool, and so in order for us to continue to maintain that. So this is the reason that we decided to bring this forward. We did talk with some of our lifeguards and asked, you know, would these be something that would attract you, keep you here? They felt so, I think this is a two-year process. I mean, we can't go from eight dollars to eleven dollars. It's, it's a significant budget impact. But we also want to show that our employees that we are trying to maintain when we're able to. And so like I said, this is just shy of five thousand dollars, and it does come out of Fund eighty. It's not impacting our classroom budget.
And my, my only question about that is, what was the legislative thing about Fund eighty? Do we have to, can we, can we add money to that? Oh, no, because the, because the, because these were already covered in that. The fact that we're raising the expense is fine.
Right, yep. So how the last budget worked with Fund eighty was it, it froze in our levy. However, current law, that goes away.
Okay.
And we haven't seen that language pop back up, so we will be in the future be able to levy what the school district wants to. Obviously, we want to, because that impacts our taxpayers. But if we're going to increase Fund eighty, do the pool, we got to make sure it's open.
Carrie?
There's two other factors that were coming to my mind when I thought about how much we love the pool. And, I mean, both my kids have taken lessons there. You know, Julia would be happy to tell you she's in level five, and we've been there a long time. And the other two factors that come to my mind are the number of kids in a particular session that our instructors have to be responsible for because we've been very fortunate to have some swim class sections of three kids or kids. And the other thing would be how warm our water is or not at the Menona Grove Pool. So as you're looking at like market assessment, in addition to pay, what were some of the other variables? And how do we compare with the size of the classes that we're asking these, our high school kids to teach?
When we had asked some of that questions, they weren't concerned about the size because it does vary across. A lot of the instructors are also on the swim team, so they understand the temperature of the water. And then that's pretty much when you look at our aquatic, the reason the temperature has to be, it's cold because of the swim team and because of the laps that they're doing. And, and we do get a number of complaints from our community members, which we understand because it is cold. However, I think once we explain that, they completely understand that.
And so that, I just wanted to think about those factors in addition to pay that might be part of the market analysis?
Yes.
Jeff had a question.
So if, if we're open all the time, that should recoup some of our costs then, right?
Yes, we're actually seeing larger swim lessons this year, and we're tracking ahead with our revenue.
Do we do any advertising besides just?
We do a lot of advertising through just in school, sponsored, you know, like through staff, or staff emails, sending it through school emails or school newsletters, so. It pretty much has built itself up in.
For, for our new members, do you know what Fund eighty is?
We had a little briefing on that.
Okay.
But I think that's the kind of thing that you start to get better at with time, so don't quiz me, but sort of.
What's it, I'm sorry.
Ditto.
Okay, just, just.
Thank you.
Okay, fine. Any further discussion?
Fund eighty is basically, that's why don't we tell them?
Okay.
Or share among each other.
Well, Fund eighty is a community service fund. It's a separate levy for things that are community oriented and community, you know, that support the wider community. And up until recently, it was limited. We couldn't add anything new to it, the legislature, but that might change.
And what, what Jared was saying, it's outside the impact on teaching and learning. It's kind of like we talked about on the, on the other thing, but it has been badly abused by school districts, and that's why they look to have.
Not here.
Not here.
Not here.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the aquatic, aquatic employee pay rates for two thousand fifteen sixteen as presented.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Future meetings. Right now, what's scheduled? There's a special meeting on May fourth. Long Range Planning Facilities Committee on May fifth. Committee, the whole meeting here for the, for the Board, May thirteenth at seven. Healthcare Benefits Planning Committee, May nineteenth. Long Range Facilities Planning Committee at the district office at May twenty-seventh. And, I'm sorry.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
May nineteenth, May twenty-seven.
May twenty-seventh, let's change to May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth. Oh, I think, thank you very much. We've changed that to May twenty-sixth.
And we'll be rescheduling policy.
And we'll be rescheduling policy, okay.
Can we quickly hang, ask people to hang around, Jeff, after this?
To discuss policy and, okay.
So are you looking for suggestions for future agenda items?
That is actually, oh, I'm sorry, I did, I skipped over that because it's blank. Item H, future agenda items, yes. Sorry. Yes, Susan?
One of the things I'd like us to do, we get a note from Dan, basically saying that, again, the climate survey is ongoing right now, and that's going to be completed May first. And that's generally presented in October or November with a more global report. I'm going to suggest, and it, you know, this is up to the board to decide, but I'd kind of like to have that information sooner, particularly if we're going to have a workshop this summer, to kind of be able to see what the climate survey says. And if there's things we want to start working on, we could start working on them in July rather than December. Even things as simple as how the board is doing, because we've talked about setting goals and we aren't really great at that. But it would help us, so one of the things we've talked about as a board is identifying board concerns that we want to talk about. So this would help us do that.
The climate survey?
Yes, and I'd like to see it sooner rather than later.
When is the climate survey due to be?
May one.
But what's the process?
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's when it closes.
Right, right. So what's the process though?
Process is, you know, all the data is compiled, and, you know, survey monkey's not the most user friendly, so to dissegregate it, we have to do some manipulation of, not manipulation, of cleaning it up to, you know, make it in a usable form. And it's part of our continuous improvement, so it's reported out with all of our other data. You know, all of our data is compiled over the summer and then to the fall and, you know, for the previous year. Because some of the, the testing data, we don't actually get till the end of the summer, and so it's all in one big report, or the way it has been in the past.
When, when would the climate survey be available?
Uh, we could have it this summer.
You don't know exactly when. You can't be more specific.
Well, in the past, it's been done with everything else, so, sure, it could be done anytime. I mean, it's just a matter of compiling the data.
Time, yeah.
Who's, who's.
Uh, currently, our director of instruction does.
Who, oh, he was here, but he's not here.
Well, I, I was just going to ask if, if the concern is the board piece, that could be pulled out perhaps. And we could deal with that in the summer at our workshop, and if, if it was a burden to disaggregate all the rest of it, that could be a little bit later. I mean, it depends on when the workshop is going to be.
I think it's fair to say, if you have a board workshop in the summer, absolutely you can have that.
We should have that, that data, yeah, because that would be relevant to us.
Is it, so let me, let me rephrase this. Is it difficult to put this together by July?
No.
Then why don't we do it?
You knew it, you have it in July.
Are, are the, is the rest of the, is the board, is the rest of the board interested in having that information so that we can start looking at things? I mean, if we're going to form this other committee, isn't that exactly what they want to go out and start talking about?
I would be interested. I don't want it, I mean, I don't want it to be disruptive of the process.
That's why I ask it, right? That's why I ask.
I would just as soon not dictate when it all comes to us. I would let, and I, I would see the climate survey along with all the other academic data as being part of our strategic plan, and so I would think it's totally appropriate to consider it altogether. I would, however, like to see the board piece at the time of our board workshop. That's just my personal thought.
Carrie?
There also may be clues in the data as a first brush at it that would help in launching the new academic year. So you think about transitions and how July, August, those are natural times where if there was some aha moment that you just get in a broad brush stroke on the data. Sometimes things jump out at you. Those would be helpful to know prior to the new school year as opposed to getting that information in October, November. So, so I'm kind of, I think, inclined like Susan Manning to think it would be helpful to get some broad brush.
But make it clear, principals get it. Well, the best.
Yeah.
Fall is when traditionally the entire report has been given to the board on continuous improvement. That's one piece of that. A lot, a lot of this data is compiled, you know, along the way at all at different times. So as far as the student surveys, what the principals need to see, absolutely, they get it right away.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to aim for September.
Dean?
I, I, I kind of agree a bit with, if, if what we're going to do, and I think it might be a good practice to have typically some kind of summer workshop. I don't know when that ends. I don't know if that's the last of August or the first of June, but it, I, I think the climate survey would be a, not just the board stuff, but I, but for the reasons, you know, suggested here. You know, it would be good, and would be good in the, I know there's a lot to do in principals and everybody starts in the fall, but to have it done in, what, April, that, you know, tallied in April and don't talk about it for six months is, you know, might be. And I, and I know you got a lot on your plate, but, but I, but I think that the, I, I think the target, if, if one of the things the board want to look at doing is, you know, call it July is the average time when you might have a summer workshop. And you always have all these lister reports and stuff to come out on. I, I would put this higher on the list.
Yeah, I think.
If it does earlier, so we could have it there.
I think that there's a consensus that we should get the port portion out as soon as possible. And we don't want to wait, wait till September or December or whenever to get it. I think that that's, that's very reasonable. Is that, is there an issue there?
I want to make it clear, this data is in our administrators' hands. They're not waiting six months.
Right.
They are using it. It's the board report that you've gotten in the fall. And the board traditionally hasn't used this data for anything other than, you know, information and, you know, so that's something I, I agree. We have, we need, should have a board workshop to talk about what the board's role is. It's a very different role, obviously, than our administrators and others that are using the data.
Do we have anything else for future agenda items? Jeff?
I would like to, I think we need a report on Nelson and a report on our substitute outsourcing before next year begins.
What's the other one? On busing?
Busing and the substitute.
Substitute, which is, I'm sorry, what's the name of that?
Teachers on call. We already had, added that to the list actually last week, at the last meeting.
Other items?
I, I would like to, we probably. I, I would like to, and we probably will get that in the superintendent report, so I don't mean to be redundant, but I'd like to make sure that we continue to get good information on the curriculum instruction position, kind of, that process, and the process that's being used, and, and it doesn't, again, necessarily have to be an agenda and just a superintendent report out, because other people are interested in that. I mean, part of it is, we're not just losing Andrew Bedell, we're losing a committee, community member, and people are interested in what we're doing and what process we're using to replace him. So if we can put it out there in a way, I think that's helpful.
Future meetings?
Do we, one of the things we didn't complete in the last meeting in closed session was that continuing piece of the superintendent evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still on an agenda? I don't know how that works.
I don't know, and if I can jump in, we, we talked about a workshop, you know, for the board. We have some new members, it's the first time since a long time we've had two new members at once. I would like, I think because of that, and some of the issues, like, but you, you just brought up, move a little bit to a workshop fairly, fairly soon, not wait till the middle of summer to do that.
I'd support that.
And so, good, I'm wondering if there's support for that, because I think we'd like to talk to, sit down, and I have some, you know, things I want to talk about, I think we want to sort of get, put some thought into the committee structure, you know, how it's, how it's going. I would like to get that feedback before I go and appoint members, if possible.
You'd also like more discussion...
Like committees we want to...
And here's, this is, committees, I'd like to talk a little bit of the content of meetings, make sure everybody, we sort of all agree on the rules, is, you know, we, we kind of have our own version of Robert's we use here, and I just want to make sure that that's all clear, and we're all happy with that. So we talked a little about the conduct of meetings, and also talk about some of the goals for the board, things we want to accomplish as a board, as a group. And so I'm wondering if there's a consensus that we do that, and that we do that relatively soon, and by relatively soon, I mean in, you know, a month or last kind of timeframe. Susan?
Well, yeah, the board policy says that the standing committees need to be appointed by June first, so we would have to waive that policy if we were going to do it later.
Right.
So if it would work for people in May, that, that'd be good. May is a pretty busy month for everybody, so maybe...
And Memorial Day takes...
I was envisioning this as kind of being in June, I mean, I, but I don't know, I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I heard it's July.
No, we've typically done it in July, but there's no magic to that, I think it could easily be in June, but May might be tough, but I, you know, if it works for people.
If you do it in July, because you only have one meeting in July.
Right, so it's made two meetings, that's why we've done it, but I agree with you, earlier is better.
Well, just, just looking at the timeframe, I mean, we could do it in, I think, next, uh, let's see, today is the twenty-ninth, I think, this week, or next weekend's probably a little too soon. The sixteenth, twenty-third, twenty-third is Memorial Day weekend, so that would be out. I would presume sixteenth, thirtieth, or June sixth.
You think in a weekend?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking a Saturday morning.
Oh, let's try, let's...
Anybody have any, I mean, but again, that's, that's a, just throwing it out there.
I would recommend on Wednesday that we don't have a board meeting.
Wednesday we don't have a board meeting?
I agree.
Okay.
Does this group use Doodle to find availability, or anything like that?
Not really.
No, because we try to set them here.
Okay.
So Wednesdays we don't have board meetings are six, twentieth, and the third.
What length are you talking about?
Uh, May and June.
Actually, Dan's gone on the sixth, that's why we set the policy meeting for the fourth. And we're going to have to reschedule policy, that's, so we might be trying to pick up that twentieth date, I don't know.
I'm not here, I'm not available on the twentieth.
Okay, well then, this is why, you know...
But you know, Peter, if you live in June...
Does anybody, I'm sorry, is there, is there a consensus on Wednesday afternoons are better than, Wednesday evenings better than Saturday morning? Traditionally, I mean, we've done workshops in the past on Saturday morning, I think you get sort of out of the normal, sort of, you know, it's a different atmosphere, a different environment, and I think it's, it makes the little discussions a little bit better, a little more...
Maybe, it might, it might be...
That's why I suggested it.
My suggestion is, is that you might, you might want to survey us through a doodle, or I guess get emails back on us, and have a, sit down with Dan, and, and work through some of these, and, and find some of it, because I think we'll be all night trying to get...
It could be a week, it could be a different weeknight, too, like Thursday or something.
Yeah, okay, I, I will take that on, I think that, what I get is a consensus is that we would like to have a workshop, and we'd like to have it relatively soon, so I'll take that, I'll send out an email, ask them for responses on times, and at the same time, I will ask for agenda suggestions from everybody, and then if I'm starting with